It's nice though.
I had a meeting in here today.
Just to be consistent or fair to everybody.
We had a safety meeting.
Just to be fair and consistent, I bought myself a VHS on and maybe I'll, I guess I'll turn the receipt over and I'll just.
I've got that, I've got that. Okay. Okay.
I kept the number 15.
Okay, okay.
People here are nice. It's nice to see this. I'll go over, more people the better. Johnny got a, like a, yes, paper. So I think we'll make, you got to say, yeah, that's good. I was thinking, I want to have some manner of ways we can be with the meeting coming, so I'd like to have a break.
After the meeting, okay, so I'll sign up this coming week.
We can meet after the day, so we, because I want to have something in.
You don't want, you don't want me to be in front of the city?
You should actually be involved in all of it.
Well, tell me, I don't want to.
No, it's cool.
But that's something I have to.
That's nice, thanks, because we all want to try to.
Thank you.
No problem.
Only through here, Shunde Randers today, says the budget would be more if it wasn't through the.
You know what I mean? I'm sorry.
Do you have one to the end?
Yes. I can't, trust me, I can't get more. I can't get any more month longer than I am. I'm just, and all I'm going to do is be honest, and, and directly within the next few days after that meeting, so we can get that, because by middle of COVID, we'll have something in, and we'll sit down, work through, present in November, and then August. That's what I'm planning on doing. We'll be quick. Yeah.
To see something, say something too.
You know?
Whenever you're ready.
You know, I already lost that awhile.
We had a minute.
So, yeah, we, we're still a little.
Good evening, thank you all for attending the City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting of September 22nd, 2022 at 5:00 PM. Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Visaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a guest this evening, Mr. Michael Scott from the Uniontown Herald Standard. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. Thank you to you mayor and to the city council. I'd also like to say thank you to the other city entities that we were fortunate to work with this year for our founding day festival, and that's why I'm here tonight. The, the police, the EMS and fire were just absolutely great to work with, they helped us immensely. The event was a huge success, for those of you that were down there to check it out, I couldn't have asked for a better way to come back after two years of COVID and bring an event to downtown Uniontown again, and celebrate our founding. And we had, at the car show, we had, my last count was 133 cars, and that was unbelievable considering the fact that I had to sell my soul to Mother Nature the night before because it was supposed to be horrible. And, and we got the word out, and Arnie Amber and his crew, Jim Beck, and those folks got the word out that this car show was to help benefit the Marshall Park Fund, and that part of the, part of the registration fees are going toward that. And then the people, they showed up, they showed up with their cars. And then the Uniontown Art Club, they were down here at Story Square, and they had 25 artists that were initially signed up, and then with the, with the weather the way it was, and then some family issues that happened, they ended up, I think, at 19. So it was a great showing, and a lot of people there, and we had people going back and forth. The, the City of Uniontown Police, Fire and EMS, FAE and EMS, were down here in between the two, the art show down on this side by Story Square, and then the car show down on the other end. And they had their vehicles in there, and it looked great, it looked, it looked really, really good. And when it was all said and done, you know, this, this whole thing that we're doing is to benefit Marshall Park and the rejuvenation of Marshall Park, and for, this will be our third year, I think it is, that we've been donating toward that. And at the end of the day, we ended up with a little bit of money. Laura, would you come up, please, also, join me over here by the mayor? We'd like to present to you a total of $2,931 that we raised this year that are going to the Marshall Park Fund. Thank you very much, appreciate it, pleasure working with you guys. And we're, we're looking forward to next year, already, planning has already started, and I just kind of give, I'd like to give you a few little tidbits as to what we're looking at for next year, and then I'll be in front of you again, asking for permission to close the street and use Story Square and that sort of thing. But what it looks like is, the art club is back on track, they'd like to have Story Square again, and we have over 30 people that are, 30 artists that are interested in jumping on board this year, having the 4th of July and having this always the weekend prior to the 4th, we're going to end up having a few days in between there so they can still get away, and people can get away for their family outings and that sort of thing. We'll do it the Saturday prior, and so they've got a full house coming in, we've had quite a few vendors express an interest in putting up booths on Main Street also, to, to be able to show and sell their wares. And the car show is on again, everybody wants to come back, make it bigger and better, and Arnie and, Arnie and Jim Beck, Arnie Amber and Jim Beck are going to take that on. And then we've already had, I think, four at this point in time, children's booths, interactive children's booths, that we're looking at being able to put in along with the police, EMS and, and fire trucks, so we can get the kids there and, and actually have a draw right there, and we wanted to have booths that were interactive for them, that were educational and that sort of thing. The Uniontown Art Club, one of the gals, the potters down there, she had her potters with down at Story Square, and she was having the kids in there, and they were getting their hands on it, and it was a big hit, and so we're going to follow that again. The other thing that we want to add next year is, in the parking lot by the old 911 and PNC Bank, is since the Italian Festival is really no longer happening or anything, we'd like to be able to put an ethnic food court in there, and we've talked with, with quite a few food trucks, and we'd be able to get them to come in, and they're all on board, and I think that that will help attract people, and it'll have some food there. We've also talked to the restaurants, and asked them if they want to have a cart there or do something like that, the Cottin Dog, buddy mentioned having a cart down there and being able to sell dogs. Having, having the car show down on the other end was a huge success for Tipples and Rizzen, and Olenies wasn't open, they were doing some remodeling, but this coming year, they should be open, and all of them were very appreciative of how it worked out for them. So, this whole thing has worked the way we had planned with the city and, and with us, and bringing recognition to downtown, supporting the downtown businesses, and, and actually having something positive come out of it that all of us as citizens here can take advantage of, and that is the rejuvenation of Marshall Park. And hopefully, there's enough money in the fund right now that, you know, we can, we can actually knock off something that is on the list to be done, and move forward, and then be able to draw some attention to that. So, thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it, and thank you all for all your help on this.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, Mr. Scott. An executive session was held September 15th at 4:30 PM for legal matters. At this time, we have any comment on agenda items only? Yes, sir. Please go to the podium.
Mr. President and City Council, thank you for hearing me out today. My name is Daniel Conlon, I'm the attorney for PennTex Ventures. There is an item on the agenda regarding PennTex Ventures, and that is, that relates to a land development plan and a subdivision in land development plan. I, actually, I was, I was quite surprised to learn two things. One is that while, while this is, this is a deliberative body, it seems that the decision has already been made, the way that the motion is read, without even hearing us in our position, it seems that the decision has already been made to deny our land development plan. I think that we made abundantly clear on the record at the planning commission of how, when my client requested information about the zoning of this 376 Morgantown Street property, that the information provided to my client was that this property was zoned commercial, C1. After that planning commission hearing, actually, I found a letter also from your zoning officer that was addressed to the planning commission, and I have several copies here, and in this letter, it also, once again, makes abundantly clear that the Morgantown Street property is zoned commercial. So with those representations, that this property was zoned commercial, I'm actually quite surprised that this council would not take into consideration, maybe ask the question of, do we have it right, or do we not have it right? It's been over 70 days since we filed a right to know request to review the entire record of, of your zoning code and every change that may have been made, we haven't received a single document, a single document, 70 days. Now, you might think, okay, it's a developer, right, but you put yourself, the citizens of Uniontown, put yourself in our shoes, and if you wanted to find out something about your government, and it takes more than, well, actually, it's more than 70 days, because it's been that long since we filed a right to know request. So, information that was requested from this city indicated that the property was zoned commercial. My client expended significant amount of money and time and effort into developing a plan based on it being commercial. There is continual representations that the property has been commercial, and we still haven't seen any documentation produced in our right to know request indicating otherwise. So I have to say, and if you, if you have your solicitor here, if you want a break, and you want to have him discuss what a vested right is, or what mandamus is, or what equitable estoppel is, you can do that right now, because I'm telling you, without considering our arguments, there's an expensive lawsuit coming down. There are any questions, if you want to ask any questions, we did bring our engineer.
Who is that paperwork submitted to?
The right to know request was submitted to the city's clerk.
So I think just initially respond to some of that. One, we, the request was a voluminous request, so we did have to go through, and the city clerk and the staff had to go through thousands of pages of city documents to try and address that. My understanding is we have about 400 pages, if I'm correct, 400 pages, actually, four you prepared this evening in response to that request, so we do have those documents available for you and can get those to you. One question I would have, because I know, you know, was stated that there were representations that it was, it was a commercial district, did, did your client ever request a zoning certificate and pay for that zoning certificate from the city?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, you could just, you can look at the record that was made at the planning commission, they did request, before they started to prepare their plans, they did request information about the zoning classification, a map was provided to them indicating the Morgantown Street property zoned commercial. And then there's a letter, okay, there's a letter right here, I can pass around, that was addressed to your planning commission, and this is from your zoning officer, and the zoning officer clearly states that the property at 367 Morgantown Street is zoned commercial, okay? We did not get this through the right to know request, we did not, this was through, through other means. But it is a letter, okay, that was addressed from your zoning officer to the planning commission. So with this kind of information, I mean, I would think that the council and the city would take a little more time to consider our request, see if you got it right, you know? We're talking about fairness here, folks, I mean, this is, this is your laws, your government, your maps, this distinguished city, you want to be able to enforce your laws fairly and equally. We have a developer, maybe the concept is not popular, maybe it's not, that's a discussion for another day, but I'm, I'm a lawyer here, I'm talking about process, I'm talking about law, and I've got to tell you, I mean, I, we, we have just not been, we have not been treated, we have not been treated, this, the city has not treated us, and at any attempt that we've made to be able to get information, it seems that there's a deliberate attempt to hide information from us. We, we're doing the homework of trying to look at the record, okay, and see if, in fact, that property is zoned commercial or not, and there's been no cooperation to be able to arrive at a correct conclusion. So for that reason, I, I, you'll, you'll act, you'll do what you need to do tonight, but I would just ask that you reconsider this, reconsider this decision, this is an important decision. It's a decision of process.
Well, I think it's really interesting, it's been beyond three days since you've talked, so are you saying that through this process, you haven't spoken to the solicitor or the city clerk during your right to know request?
I have.
Is this the first time?
No, I, I have.
Oh, okay.
We're going off a recommendation from the planning commission. All the documentation's in.
Did you get a third petition?
Yeah, but then.
So it's beyond 30 days as well?
Is that all, sir?
That's all I have.
Thank you for your time. Any other comments on agenda items only?
Absolutely, I want to be succinct. I have comments for the agenda and not, I just want to give a context for respect, and I want this added to the agenda. This time last Thursday, I received an award from the White House. I received an award for, United We Stand for the Work That I Do Outside of My Region, I want to leave it here. I'm talking about item 247, okay, but I want you to have that letter, and so my question about item 2, I'm sorry, 267, a year ago, I was reached out to with my organization to help an employee, that was a union employee for the sewer department, that had basically all their rights refused in terms of being disciplined, and then that person was ultimately fired. That person was also told that they were not, the position had no more funding for it, and so today, it's on the agenda to hire that position, and I'm just wondering, as an advocate for the person that reached out to me a year ago, how is this position refunded when that person was terminated and told there was no funding for her position?
This is a part-time position, her position was.
Okay, so then, so you just found money for a part-time, she couldn't have been reduced?
No.
That's the issue, is it? All right, so I'll be back for the other agenda items, but I want you to have that letter, so you, I got it because of the work that I do in Uniontown as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only?
This comment is for agenda item 256, it's about trick-or-treating, I want to go into a little bit detail, it's been a number of years since the City of Uniontown gave the okay for trick-or-treating, after discussions with North and South Union, it's agreeable, and talking to Mr. Witt, if we do, all do it on the same day, it would cut down the number of kids coming out into the community, from outside the community, along with help from fire and police to patrol the areas, so I just wanted to extend that a little bit of information before you approve or deny that item number. I also have a question about line item 261, to reallocate $20,000 of expenses from the general fund, line item 406242, to 438183, can you elaborate for me? Can you elaborate on that for me?
On, on what?
I'm asking for the reallocation of the $20,000.
Yeah, so that reallocation was a line item that was approved in the beginning of, well, end of last year, adopted as part of the budget. It also reflects missed revenue also in, in that line item, and the purpose of that line item was the fund for an Italian festival, which did not come to fruition, so that money is, that, that line item is being re-appropriated, and it is, it is being moved over into another line item in, in the budget.
Okay, so I have a question for you, on the meeting that we had, you and I had on September 1st, and I asked to use some of that money, and I just want to make it clear, this $20,000 came out of my budget for the Italian festival, I asked you if I can use some of that money for other events, and you said, please let me finish.
So, yeah, so.
Please let me finish.
So, we can, so what we will do today is, we will, we will vote on that today.
I asked you to spend some of that money on events, and you said, no.
So we will, we will vote on that, please.
And where is it going? It's going to overtime in the street department.
Keep calm.
And you're denying me of, of my, my job.
So that is an event that is not happening, it's an event that's not happening, it's scheduled for an Italian festival, and because there, whether or not we could get it accomplished, so that money is being moved over into an area where it's much needed, okay, that's into the street department overtime.
It's for overtime.
And I will have to, you know, ask you, no more loud outbursts, please.
You will not let me finish.
Okay, so no more loud outbursts, please.
He's going to have a story.
So that's completely allowable too, so what is, what's going on, is it makes better sense to put this money into overtime, which we were already spent over, the money's already spent. So, so the problem is here, so the problem here is, is that this is totally allowable, okay, and it makes sense, so if we're not, if we budget money to be spent, and also budget money to be brought in as revenue, and we're not, and we're missing that revenue, it's perfect that we move it into an area that's more suited, and that is going to be to pay the people in that department where it's over, and it's, it's completely allowable, okay? So whether anybody agrees to, would anybody, whether or not city employees are happy with the way the board moves money and spends money, I think this is absolutely appropriate, and I don't appreciate council being questioned on that line item, considering the fact that city employees do not have that call, it is for the call, so it'll be up for vote today, and I guess we'll find out if that money gets moved over to the appropriate line item, thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only?
Just comment on three items, the first one I'm going to start with is number 244, be the accept the resignation of a patrolman Tristan Cooley effective 9/22, he's already separated from our agency, he was providing an opportunity that, I can tell you that I had the same opportunity at one point, and I'm glad I didn't take it from where I'm currently standing now, but he was offered the opportunity to take over his father's construction company with much higher revenues than a cop would probably make in 20 years, he's probably going to make in five, so he, he made a decision financially, he believes this in his best interest. Item number 245, you'll see on the agenda, there's approve a purchase for 2021 Dodge Charger for use in the police department for a cost of $32,000, just under $33,000. This was not ideal, this is not what I had the timeframe that I wanted to do this, just to give you a kind of a little thought process on this, there was a lot of thought that went under the course of many days, and studying through our budgets and the people who manage our budgets, be it our city clerks, the mayor, Jared, I'm sorry, complimentability, these people pay very close attention to my budget and where I spend and revenues that I bring in. So we're starting our budget preparation talks for 2023, we're obviously in need of a patrol car for 2023 to budget, the cost of a new patrol car went up, $8,400 just for the Coast Guard's pricing, upfitting went up at least another $3,000, which would put us, the cost of a brand new car hit roughly just south of $60,000 marked with camera units put into it, and radios, which led me to make the next move, I asked the dealer if they had any 2022s available, and they told me if they, if I could find one, they would pay us if I found one for them. So I know they don't exist, so I started looking for used cars, I came across this 2021 Dodge Charger down in Georgia, it's got 2,000 miles, 140 engine hours, car's basically brand new. The, the move on this vehicle was, patrol car that I'm driving now is a take home, we'll get pushed out of patrol, so we have continuity in our fleet, and our guys are driving what we know are the safest vehicles for them to be in to do their job, because if we don't have cars, we're not going to get the calls. And finally, is 241, that's going to be approved to hire Seth Hargreaves, a patrolman for the city. Seth is a lifelong resident of FAE County, he has strong family ties to this area, he's a full-time patrolman currently with the pit carrying police department, is actually going to take a pay cut to come work for us, because he wants to come home, which I believe is commendable. He's looking forward to really making a difference in the community, that's the question I like to ask officers, what, what brings you to us? And if the answer is somewhere in the world that they want to make a difference, it's not because they want to be a cop and do cool things, it's, if you want to make a difference, and that's, that's the motto that I'm trying to push for our guys, to make a difference in our community. So I'd appreciate the, the votes for those items, and any questions, please let me know. Good? Thank you all.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments on agenda items only, Mr. John?
Brian, good? I had to lower it, everybody else is a little taller. And council, mayor, Ms. Marshall, everybody welcome, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. First, agenda item 248, to authorize improvements to Bailey Park through private donations, this is some entities within the city who grew up in the city, who are generationally from the city, who want to put some effort into Bailey Park, and again, Bailey Park is along the Sheepskin Trail, for those of you who might not be from around here, who might not know, that Sheepskin Trail will eventually connect to the Great Allegheny Passage, which will. which will connect Morgantown to Union Town to Connaughtsville to Pittsburgh to Ohio Powell to Washington DC, all through a hiking and biking trail, which will bring visitors from all over the world into Union Town. So Bailey Park is a very, very special place for a lot of people. And if people were going to be coming to Union Town from all over the world, that's something that we do need to showcase. And if we have some private people who want to see that happen, I would appreciate that support. Item number 249. To accept proposal for city of Union Town signage to be paid with hotel tax funds. Those of you who drive around the city and see those welcome to Union Town signs that were put up, I believe by Mr. Hardy about 20 years ago, are starting to wear and tear. And much thanks to the county commissioners who brought that to our attention to apply for that hotel tax grant for those signs. We did have a couple of signs, bids. I'm sure you guys voted on in executive session. But it would, if you have any questions on that, please ask away. Both of those companies.
I'd like to make that clear. So in executive session, no votes will be taking place because that is a direct violation of sunshine.
I'm new to this, councilman, I apologize.
That does not happen.
Okay. If you guys talked about it.
Discuss those type of issues because when we go to executive session, those type of meetings are for personnel or legal matters.
I've never been to one, so I'm not quite sure.
I just want to, I just want to, sorry to interrupt you.
But do you guys have any questions on those bids while I'm here and talking about it? I believe both bids, or all three bids, came from two separate entities or companies from the city of Union Town. Again, it's nice to keep business in the city of Union Town. Fast Signs was one. And Boar Signs actually submitted two different quotations. And I believe the one that is a little bit more expensive is better material. And I mean, if you drive by the shopping center, half of that sign's missing. And again, the county commissioners brought this to our attention, that we would help in this. So those bids are just for the signs. It would be on us to get those signs put up. No questions on those sign bids, okay? 255. To accept the proposal of Fray Tree Specialists for Tree Removal. That's an area by the hospital in which the city owns a strip of land and uses it as a right-of-way. And these trees that are along this gentleman's house are in danger of falling. And it is a dangerous situation from what Mr. Fray had said. And the sooner we could get that taken care of, the better. I know Johnny and his crew went up to look at those trees and to look at that.
They've already had damage.
And they've already had damage. And he has taken it upon himself to clean that damage on his own, on his own dime. We have reached out to the hospital unsuccessfully to try to get some help because it does border the helipad. But we did reach out to the hospital a few different times. They were unwilling to help. But again, it is on city property. And the, this one company that did look at it, I believe that it is going to be a job that is way more than the proposal he submitted. I don't know what that number is, I don't think anybody does. But this is the kind of people, again, when you have local companies coming and looking at local jobs, they're gonna look out for their neighbor because that's what we do. I apologize for the long-windedness. Item number 257, on the next page. To accept my resignation as Director of Community Development. As of, Ms. Marshall, correct me if I'm wrong, 82422. It's my intention, I took a teaching position at St. John's Elementary School. I teach third grade now and have been. And resigned before that and have been working on my own dime for the last 28 days. Because as, if you've come to these meetings or you know me, we are vested in the city, we live in the city. We own property in the city and we care about the city. And along those lines, working with this group of people sitting at this table, I believe that we do the right thing. And I believe in everybody at this table, which is why I would like to continue on a part-time basis to work on some of the things that I have been working on, as well as some of the projects I've spoken to some of you about that would like to see me carry out. Again, it is that passion that drives us to move the forward city. And together, we can still accomplish a lot. Item number 270 and number 271. A scoreboard and a windscreen for the baseball field at Bailey Park. That is to be provided by LSA funds. And again, the quotes that we got are very inexpensive for quality materials. And the scoreboard, we got two quotes. The second scoreboard is a little bit more expensive. However, it provides more room for advertisement space for the city to sell at Bailey Park. So I would recommend that, a little bit more expensive scoreboard. I can, I am remiss, I think I missed one resignation. Item number 259. Because I have resigned, no longer working, well, I have been working on the DCED's grant to make sure that it continues and the city doesn't miss that money that is coming in for what it needs to come in. But as I transition into the teaching role and out of a full-time role here, I do believe it's in the city's best interest to enter into that cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority. Dana at K2 is kind of their contracted, I don't want to say executive director because that would be speaking out of term. But she has gone above and beyond to make sure that monies are spent correctly and that monies from previous grants are utilized. She works with the DCED on a daily basis. And she is, I don't want to stay solely responsible for those lights getting put up at Bailey Park, but she's, she's pretty close. She just knows the system, she knows how things work. And again, just a few things that the redevelopment authority has been working on with Dana. They have voted to put a beautiful park in at Lemon Street. And that is gonna be, you know, I can't put a dollar amount to it, but I did see the drawings and the specs that Dana sent me and that Stacia Fay Gillen sent me. And they are, they're immaculate. Playground equipment, pavilion, walking trail. All for a park where there is, where there is a part, underutilized park. It's underutilized space. And it is a heavily populated area. Again, the lights at Bailey Park, they're working on things like community action, Beaston Town housing projects and I want to, or housing project. And I want to congratulate them on closing on those properties and moving forward. Those are things that the city is gonna reap tremendous benefits from. And again, it's the redevelopment authority of the city of Union Town and Dana Kendrick and K2 Engineering and the work that they're putting in to make sure that we are taking steps forward. And I am extremely confident handing that over to them. If you guys would be confident. Again, they've got long-term plans to help the city. And I believe it's in their intention to hire a full-time director to administer this grant in cooperation with the DCED and using their job specifications to hire somebody who is qualified to do the job. I know it's a little bit long-winded. Are there any questions?
One question for you, Mr. John.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment on item 248 again. The Bailey Park Through Private Donations.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank you and private citizen John McKeon for assisting myself in getting this project done. John, thank you so much for really spearheading the project. Mookie and I have been near you, but you're spearheading. Just for an example, today I drove by Bailey Park and, not meaning to stop, but John was there evidently on his lunch hour. And he's put a full heck of a lot of time in. I just want to say thank you from the city in spearheading that project.
Much thanks, John. And for those of you who are concerned about missing some trees, it's our intention to replant and to replant in a manner that is conducive to a park. And, you know, those trees that had come down were dying and dead. And again, were a safety issue. So those beautifications are gonna come.
Please drive by Bailey Park and take a look. It's, it's a huge improvement.
And smell the pine sawdust.
I texted Mookie one day about smell the pine dust. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
I'll be commenting on the upgrades at Bailey Park when I give my report at the end of the meeting.
Any other comments on agenda items only? If not, we have a special.
Proclamation.
A proclamation of the American, Daughters of American Revolution. And I'd like to read that now. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, a guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition, recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Thomas W. Gurkey, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Union Town and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Union Town, Pennsylvania to be affixed to this first day of September of the year of our war 2022.
Be resolved by the City Council, the city of Union Town, that the mayor and city council do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes. Monthly Report of the Treasurer. Did everyone receive the report?
Yes.
Anyone here to present a report from the treasurer's office?
Be resolved by the City Council, the city of Union Town, to receive the Report of the Treasurer for the month of August 2022. Be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the city of Union Town, to hire Seth Haggerty as patrolman for the city of Union Town Police Department with a six-month probationary period. Starting salary as indicated by contract at $24.49 per hour with a start date of Monday, October 3rd, 2022, pending successful completion of a medical and psychological exam. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Mayor, the swearing-in of Mr. Haggerty. Go to the podium.
So anyone's not aware who's gonna be conducting Seth's swearing-in is gonna be his father, the arm of the law, however. He was magistrate out of town as well. Our next year show, but I still have a soft inside. This is something that I think I'd like, if my dad was magistrate, to do the same.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity and honor to do this. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Bay and the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and that you restore and discharge the duties of control and power? And do you further swear or affirm that you do not advocate, nor are you knowingly a member of any organization that advocates, the overthrow of government of the United States or this Commonwealth, or by force or violence or other unconstitutional means, or seeking by force or violence to deny other persons their rights under the Constitution of the United States or this Commonwealth? And do you further swear or affirm that you do not advocate, nor are you knowingly a member of such organization during the period that you were employed in the city of Union Town?
I do.
Much more.
Please sign here. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Flashlight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council, the city of Union Town, to accept amendments of the August 4th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting. Be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the city of Union Town. Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured toward the city of Union Town for August 2022 invoices in the general fund, Sewer fund, $134,379.52. Recreation, $2,496.81. Highway, $12,345.18. Recycling, $7,165. Off-street, $3,053.46. Library, $1,450.42. Community development, $77.69. Mr. Billy?
Before we take this vote for the public and for those that are viewing digitally, I'd just like to go through the unpaid bills. And this is just gonna be in the general. So we have some other ones, but it's really lengthy. And I think that it's important that when we say the number $202,000, that the city, the residents, they know what this $202,000 is. So just to start off, I'm gonna rattle them off really quick. Four Guys Tires at $932. Best Line for $1,070. Breeze Line for $279. Burnsworth Garage for $125. Center Independence for $3,862. Column Software PVC is $1,201. Cool Spring Stone Company is $119. Cypher and Cypher, $1,600. DNM Trucking Company, Inc., $6,270. Easy Permit Post is $12. Enco Insurance, $54,268. Evans Brothers Services LLC, $626. Fayette Parts Service Account, $231. Full Service Network, $1,049. George R. Smalley Company, Inc., $68. Gloria J. McCormick, $505. Golden Eagle Asphalt, $2,932. Graphic Shop, $136. Herald Standard, $1,500. Hoff Consulting LLC, $175. Janitor Supply Company, $352. John &amp; John, $1,665. John Cormos, John Cormos, $96. Car Nuts, $1,674. Coveville Building and Plumbing Supplies, $232. Lowe's, $17. Mathis Tri-Gas, $242. McCullough &amp; Wolf, $23,000. Middletown Tractor Sales, $69. National Elevator Inspection, $96. Newcomer Offices, $83. Old Dominion Brush, $490. PUC Fund, PAUC Fund. That was a. PA Municipal Health Insurance Cooperative, $51,368. Pennsylvania American Water, $4,428. Department of Transportation, $39. Prodan &amp; Bryan, $165. Quill Corporation, $378. Ross Brothers, $189. Rude Communications, $128. Ryan Oil Company, $3,153. Select Insurance Company of America, $1,704. Sherwin-Womans, $58. Searchy, $250. Smithville Hardware, $123. Streamlight, $74. Summit Risk Services, $10,000. Timothy J. Witt Esquire, $35. Streamlight $74, Summit Risk Services $10,000, Timothy J. Witt Esquire $3,500, Tri-County Services $20, Tri-Tech Software $4,466, Unity Printing $5,271, One of Our Patrolmen reimbursement for dog food $61, West Penn Power $2,125, Wood Republic Safety Group $416, Yarner's Trophy $25. That gives us a total, and each one of these numbers, they all, I'm, I'm giving you the dollar amount, each one of those numbers also had cents involved in that. Also, that would reflect $163,270, we have a general entry credit in there, that's what brings that up to $202,000, that's, that's $39,800, so that gives us the total of the 202. I know, I know it's lengthy, but I think it's important for everyone to just kind of get a feel of what these bills are, that's just for the general fund. I will be voting yes. I'm sorry, you, you either, you could have addressed it at the beginning or at the end.
Wait, you wouldn't have known if you didn't say, so...
No, I think it's important to talk about it.
Alright, so since you brought it down, I knew you wasn't brought it down, why are the two accounts being the same, $23,000 for your court, and $16,000 per cent per second, driving through the same line?
That's something that we can probably talk about after, if you'd like to.
Well, I think we talk about it, the public know, and the public should know, I think we're doing that. Same.
So, yeah, I mean, there's two separate accounting bills, because there were two separate audits that were put forward, so, the one...
So clarify that, Tim, two separate audits?
Two separate audits.
And the first contract was in April 2021, so it's a year and a half later, that same account was being paid.
So they're still, they're still ongoing work in connection with that?
That should be clarified, I know, that should be clarified.
So that's why that's, that's why that's on that on the list.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of patrolman Tristan Cooley, expected September 2nd, 2022. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of a 2021 Dodge Charger for use in the City of Uniontown Police Department from Jackie Jones Chrysler Chief for a purchase price of $32,695.94, upfitting of $7,986, and shipping fee of $800 to be paid separately from the tobacco fund. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
This is almost half of what it would cost next year to get a new one, so absolutely yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify approval of civil service testing for promotional exams for the two budgeted open corporal positions in the police department. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify approval of renewal of the yearly service agreement for Uniontown Police Department Barracuda Backup Cloud-Based Server with Capital Arena Intermediate Unit for 12 months for a cost of $1,437.60 from July 31, 2022 to July 30, 2023. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, the council ratify approval of various improvements made to Bailey Park using funds from private donations. A preliminary budget of $52,500 has been estimated for tree removal, ceiling parking lot, and split rail fence with gates. Improvements will include, but are not limited to, replacement of fencing around the parking lot at Pennsylvania Avenue, landscape and signage along Sheepskin Trail, trees to be removed along parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue, trees to be planted around parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue, parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue to be sealed and striped, pavilions to be built around the park and around the Sheepskin Trail, tennis courts, pickleball courts to be resurfaced and painted, basketball courts to be resurfaced and painted, fencing around basketball and tennis courts to be replaced. City will apply for any necessary permits for cage engineering or any of the above projects that need permitting. Mr. Basaki?
This is truly a private donation, we have no idea, and it's absolutely amazing. I want to thank whoever it was, so absolutely yes, thank you.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, I also want to thank the anonymous donation also, and the donator.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
This next resolution is for a vote on the two separate quotes that we got for the signage. This is the Fast Sign quote. I believe it's, Mr. John said, there's two different quotes here from Bor Sign. One is for different material, I believe that one is reflective and one isn't, I remember it, yes. The lower bid is for the non-reflective vinyl lettering, and the higher one is for the reflective vinyl. Bor Sign's reflective vinyl quote was $10,225.50, and Jared, I believe this was also for reflective or no? The Fast Sign bid was, or quote was $9,954.57. It doesn't indicate, but I don't think it looks like it is reflective for that bid. The non-reflective bid from Bor Signs was $81.80.
That's back.
Yes, the specs are included in this one, and they're identical to, to the Fast Sign bid. So to compare them together, I would say the Fast Sign bid of $9,954.50 compares to the $81.80 bid of Bor Sign. The $10,225 bid from Bor Sign is for the reflective lettering.
Did the Fast Signs say that they were reflective or not, the Fast Signs?
It doesn't say it's reflective, but it doesn't look like it, it is, it says UV direct print with 3.2 UV laminate. I don't know, do you know, I don't think it is.
I don't think those are reflective.
I don't think the ones that are up there now are reflective either.
Correct, yes. I do know why you guys are looking at that, these are in dire need of replacement. Some of the directional signage, where it says Uniontown Kindergarten, those are things where people coming from outside of our area need to know where to go, the county prison is being moved, and there are currently airways for that, so there are some things why you guys are overlooking that, but this is going to be very beneficial, it'll pretty up our city a little bit. And it is coming through grant money.
Hotel tax.
Hotel tax grant money, and that grant money is specifically for advertisement and promotion. So it's not something that's coming out of the general budget, it's not something that is costing the city a penny, to be honest with you. It's something that the county commissioners approached us and asked us to do this for them, so we humbly applaud. Sorry, Mr. Morosi, I didn't have a microphone in front of me. That'll be the back door, any other questions for me to answer? But those, those are four of the exact same street signage, the mayor and I actually drove around town and took pictures of them, and printed the street signs out in that mansion. Did you guys want to see these?
No.
So do I have a motion by anyone for either sign company?
Motion for the board's non-reflective.
The board non-reflective?
Yes, so Bor Sign Company?
Yes.
So non-reflective $8,180. If you guys want to take a look at the bids real quick?
Where are they located at?
They are, you have one company inside Uniontown, one just outside the city.
Do I have a second on Mr. Basaki?
I'll, I'll second that.
What was that amount?
$8,180. $8,180.
Even?
$8,180, yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the quote from Bor Signs in the amount of $8,180 for non-reflective for the replacement of City of Uniontown signage. The county commissioners have offered to replace said signs using hotel fund, hotel tax fund. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of hatch basins, risers, drains, and grates for use in the Public Works Department from EJ USA at a cost of $4,523.2.
Just real quick, I just want to mention, this is, just items we keep on hand, but these, these items are, they're falling apart throughout the city, I mean, we can't, there's safety issues and problems, and we think, this is just stuff we use every day, so just wanted to explain, you know, what it was.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
This is a resolution for leasing option for the new street sweeper. You have three separate options here, they're all the same, interest rate, three years, you have a one-time annual payment for three years of $50,529, or annual payment at $38,771.13, and for five years, five annual payments at $31,726.73. I would need a motion, Tim, to choose which, which of the three?
Jared, with you being financing counsel, I just wanted to ask you, what out of these three?
So...
Are the $100,000 downplaying, if you remember?
Yeah, so, to, not to bring back, you know, the, the argument of, you know, what we had earlier in the year, so, you know, of course, this is a purchase that I didn't agree upon. My opinion on a finance stand is to try to stretch it out, that way we don't have that hit, you know, you're only talking 50,000, 38,000, 31,000 amounts still, but I think overall, to stretch it out, that way we can budget for it.
Fine, thank you.
Well, I'll make a motion to go with the five-year plan, five annual payments at
I'll second that.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the financing proposal of 911 Leasing in the amount of $141,152.70, with the remaining balance on the Pelican Street Sweeper with the following terms, five years, 4.67% interest, and five annual one-time-a-year payment at $31,726.73, to be paid from Liquid Fuels Fund, and to authorize the mayor and/or the Director of Accounts and Finance to execute all necessary paperwork for said financing. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
And, and this is because, this vote, the, the way I'm voting today is because of my previous vote, and, and that'll be known.
And Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
This next bid is also for paving bid, these bids were opened on our originally scheduled September meeting, Mr. Billy and I were present for the bid opening. Jared, if you want to review the bid amount, I think I have a bid sheet here.
Yeah, so this, this was part of a bid deadline, and that's why this was opened up on September 1st at 5:00.
So, Jared, with the 12 questions we're showing you on, what...
We are on number 252.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so first bid was Costabala Construction Incorporated, we have a bid total of $125,235.12.
Say that again, Jared, $125?
It was $125,235.12.
And who was that one?
This was from Costabala. So the next bid was Redstone Escavating LLC. This bid was for $163,435.35.
Thank you, it's, it's working?
The third bid we received was from Morgan Escavating LP. This bid was for $144,754.15.
Who was that from, Jared?
Again, this was from Morgan Escavating LP. Those are all the bids?
No, there's one more.
One more?
It's from El Grande.
Oh, yeah. So this one is El Grande, El Grande Industries, Inc.
Anyone want to make a motion to accept?
So just to go through again, we've received four bids, $125,235.12 from Costabala Construction, $163,435.35 from Redstone Escavating, $144,754.15 from Morgan Escavating, $140,000... So just to go through again, we've received four bids: one hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, twelve cents from Costaboli Construction; one hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty-five cents from Redstone Escavating; one hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty, fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents from Morgan Escavating; one hundred and forty thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents from El Grande.
A motion taken, the lowest bid on this one.
I will second the bid for Costaboli Construction.
Could you have a couple in front of me, just to make a follow-up, C O S?
C O S T A B I L B, construction.
Awesome. Cluster bill.
Cluster bill.
Awesome.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the bid of costable construction in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents for paving of city streets from Liquid Fuels Fund. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the recommendation of the City of Uniontown Planning Commission, the petition of PTV twelve fifty-two LLC, that District Lot Thirty-Eight, Map Eleven, Lot Zero Zero One Nine Seven shall be subdivided into two parcels, with the conditions that the setbacks required for this subdivision shall be those consistent with an R-three high-density residential parcel in the City of Uniontown. Mr. Shuhon?
One, I'm sorry, one second, councilman. I'm sorry, sorry for the interruption.
Tim, can you give us a little bit more clarification on this one?
So with respect to, there were two items that were referred to City Council from the Planning Commission. One was a subdivision request for that particular parcel, where they're seeking to subdivide it with a portion of it being used for the current dwellings that are located on that property, and then the other parcel located on Morgantown Street is the parcel that is then anticipated to be developed. So this first motion is just a request for the subdivision of those parcels in accordance with the plans that were submitted. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this subdivision request, so.
So, you know, I was at the meeting, and the intent with this recommendation was that the subdivision was approved for R-three only, and no further special exemption at all. So that was the recommendation of the Planning Commission, was to, you know, subdivide that front section for R-three designation and without any special exemption.
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the recommendations of the Uniontown Planning Commission to deny the petition of PTV twelve fifty-two LLC for final land development approval for a dollar general store. As the property, District Thirty-Eight, Map Eleven, and Lot Zero One Nine Seven, is zoned as R-three high-density residential, and a retail store is not a permitted use, even by special exception. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the quote from Free Cry Tree Specialist to remove trees on city properties situated directly above Uniontown Hospital helipad. All trees will be removed and hauled away from fence corner post along the street to the fence corner posts below on the same straight line of fence for a cost of ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize citywide trick-or-treating on Monday, October thirty-first, 2022, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and will coincide with North and South Union Township. This is recommended for children thirteen years and younger and residents interested in participating to leave a porch light on. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Mark John as the City of Uniontown Director of Community Development, effective August twenty-seventh, 2022. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, with regret.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Gurke?
With regrets, yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve payment of compensated absences to Mark John as follows: eight sick days and two carsonal days, for a total of ten days, sixty-five hours, and for a total of one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a cooperation agreement with City of Uniontown Redevelopment Authority for the administration of CDBG projects and funding, and other city projects and funding pending review and approval by the city solicitor. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize contracting professional services of Mark John to finish projects to completion that he has begun and been involved with at a fee of five thousand dollars until December thirty-first, 2022, at which time, terms of service will be revisited. Mr. Basaki?
I'll blow up your phone until that date, so, you know, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve reallocation of twenty thousand dollars expenses from general fund line item four oh six point two four two, planning and community relations event expenses, to four three eight point one eight three, highway maintenance of streets over time. Mr. Winfrey?
Well, I heard what Councilman Billy said, and I can agree with putting the money, moving it, but if Laura, if you would have any needed money in the future, I'd be wanting to vote for it. So I'll vote yes on it. We can vote it out.
Mr. Shuhon?
Well, would we be willing to go half, Jared? Councilman?
I think, I think it's appropriate to move twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand was what was budgeted in there, so we are leaving in there, and it was also, there was also expenditures that have already come out of that to cover for the Firecracker Five K, and just to, you know, the Firecracker Five K lost money. So the city's not into doing, doing these events that are normally, and historically, events that were done by volunteer work, and all these donations go to nonprofits. So not, not that I am against the city getting into these events, but what I am against is the city taking donations directly out of the nonprofits' pockets. So in light of that, whenever we're supposed, whenever we budget for events to cost, and we also budget for revenue, and if I could go back to the Firecracker Five K, we had revenue. It was a shortfall all around. It was an expense, and it was a shortfall. So with this, so the Italian festival, okay, whether it be an ethnic festival in the future, or the Italian festival, historically, Uniontown has held county events. These county events are, these events that the city holds is very important to the county. There, not only are we missing, you know, we're moving this expenditure out to another line item where it's needed. We also have to account for the shortfall in the revenue, which affects the bottom line. So to answer the question, we have left money in that line item. It's a low amount. We only have a few months left of the year, and we don't have many events scheduled. So that, do believe that as appropriate, and it is what I'm recommending. Again, it is individually up to all of you to vote with me, or to vote against it.
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Unfortunately, this was for an event that didn't happen. I mean, it just, that's just the way it goes. I mean, we can't just use something or budget for something that just, that doesn't happen, so yes.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve acceptance of a FEMA assistance firefighters grant for a total approved budget of one hundred and sixty-five thousand with a five percent match of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents by the City of Uniontown. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase and installation of a park bench at Bailey Park to memorialize a recent youth, Uniontown area high school graduate, and a member of the Uniontown Red Raider baseball and football team that recently lost his life. All costs for this project to be funded by friends and family. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of four Mastercraft Trail HD ten ply tires from Sanitary Sewer Chevy thirty-five hundred from Burn Allen Tire for seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Mr. Billy?
Let's get, could you elaborate a little more on this, this purchase right here from Burn Allen? Is this something that we could have gone and looked, or is this, you know, is this a cheap route? What?
In the past, I've gotten different both no tires, because now we're on closer loads, and we can just always work with them. When we have an issue with any of our equipment or any of the trucks, they're always quick to fix it. So long as we have a flat on the truck, they don't even force it to attach it, because it's just a passenger, so I just like to keep that moving.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
That's actually a really good price for these tires, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize K-two engineering to perform a traffic study for the purpose of potential safety issues and the need for a crosswalk on South Street behind White Swan Apartments.
So this, this was, the city received an email, a tragedy that happened behind the White Swan building. The representative wanted to come to the meeting and speak, and, and try to get the city to do something in the back of that building. And, and reading the email through, I thought, you know, I've got with Councilman Basaki, and I thought that the city can go even further. Why even have them come up and speak on this, and we should do something. This is a senior high-rise. At night, this is a high-traffic area, and through further conversation with the councilman, you know, this is something that we actually don't even have to vote on. We can actually go and do this, but I think that still, we can, we can paint the lines on that street, but I still think that a traffic study needs to be done through K-two to see if there's anything additional that we can do, if blinking light or something else that can happen. Maybe, maybe, you know, we could put a speed hump in, or maybe a speed hump is too dangerous for that area. So I think that there's something that would be good for K-two to look into, and at the same time, still accomplish what you and I had talked about. I think moving forward does a great way to go, but I think the city can go a little further, see if we can make that area a little bit more safe, especially at night. It's a very tragic story of what had taken place. Very unfortunate, very unfortunate.
I'm forgetting who's with it, Mr. Basaki? No?
I'm not sure if you even started, but.
I don't think you start.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
You can read the resolution, okay. It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize K-two engineering to perform a traffic study with the purpose of potential safety issues and the need for a crosswalk on South Street behind White Swan Apartments. Mr. Basaki?
We're going to paint the lines for the crosswalk immediately, well, as soon as possible. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say immediately, as soon as possible, which should be shortly, and then we can, like Councilman Billy said, we're going to look into if there's anything we can do in addition to that, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, I also have a relative that lives in the White Swan Apartments, yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a salary increase of one dollar and three cents per hour of regular hour work for promoted assistant fire chiefs Richard Lent and Michael Smith Berger.
So again, I, you know, just as last month, I said that, you know, it is not about the people. We have great guys, very knowledgeable, talented men. And I voted no, and Mr. Shuhon, Councilman Shuhon voted no as well, and that was for a twenty-five cent pay increase along with the title, and now we bring it back the very next meeting with a dollar three per hour. And, you know, very confused, because at the very beginning of the year, I expressed that this is something that is doable if we come budget time, and we properly budget for this, okay? We're already in a department, and we're in a department that is already overspent in the budget. So you are already over, and now we are going to, and I can guarantee, and it's no disrespect, but I can guarantee that we don't even know the future forecast for even the twenty-five cents, and I'm not talking about myself or the clerk, and, and for the deputy that's also in that position to, to do these future forecasts. What I'm saying is, is that why wasn't it not voted on at the previous meeting? You know, the resolution read for twenty-five cents, and that's what was voted on, and Councilman Shuhon and myself, we both voted no for different reasons. My reason, I wanted to put it in the budget for next year. Councilman Shuhon's reason is he was, would go for one this year and one next year, and now we come back the very next meeting, and I hate to say it again, and I have to say it again, it's not about the people we have working it, and, you know, and I've had, I've heard a lot of comments and a lot of talk in these, in these past few months since the vote, and I just don't know, and I don't understand. Did we not know what we were voting on when we voted on this?
The wrong amount was put on that resolution, and that's, if something's wrong, we need to correct it.
Okay.
And it was wrong. And it probably bypassed me on the twenty-five cents, but I've always talked about to give them a three thousand dollar raise. It's been stated for months, and then the wrong amount was put on the resolution. I'm here as a charge of firemen to say we made a mistake. Anyone knows, when you make a mistake, you try to correct it. We try to correct it, and I think that we need to correct the mistake that was made last month. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I think they're worthy of it. They're assistant chiefs, and I think they deserve that raise.
If I could also chime in along, with all due respect to everyone at the council, they previously were only making twenty-five cents an hour as a shift supervisor, and so they essentially stayed at the same rate. Now, their overtime rate would have picked up, but I ran some figures just based on like their overtime last year, and I know you can't compare last year. Now you can't compare last year to this year. At the end of the day, these guys wouldn't have made it in a year's time, that's $250. I mean, so that's just kind of, and I'm like you, I believe that we, all the people we have paid. So, I mean, that's just my two cents. Again, that's with all due respect to everybody, but it's my feeling.
So Chief, I, I hope you really do understand
Oh, I do.
where I'm coming from.
I certainly.
Because I've, I've had numerous conversations with you and Councilman Winfrey about building this into the budget so we know what the accurate forecast is. There's a lot of different areas that, you know, a 25 cents or, or a, essentially a $1.28 an hour, you know? And we're already, you know, you, you have budgeted, okay? You know, you have budgeted, and we've already spent about $500,000 more here. I mean, I'm looking at the wrong one. So we have a million, a million six is the budget, okay?
Okay. Go ahead and stop on that.
So a million, 1.1 was the budget.
Yeah.
We've, we've spent 1.4 million dollars. Okay, so we're over budget. And that's what I keep, continue to come to this board, and I tried to very nicely explain what's going on, but it's becoming very frustrating because you know what? Am I the only one that even cares about the city? Am I the only one who even cares about the money that comes in, the money that goes out? Because we sit here and we talk about this stuff, and I'm the only one that's sitting here listening, you know? Am I listening to myself talk? I sit here and watch these videos, and, you know, I'm the only one that's sitting here talking about wasting the taxpayers' money. And I just think it's absurd, you know? And I have to vote no.
I think we just don't really have too much data. We have to say we get limited to three minutes up here at the top, so it's very limited to say that's a problem. Because I kind of agree, I feel like the fire chiefs, they do their job. They should, they deserve it.
And that I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing with you in any, in any bit of that. But it comes to a point where
They make a nice dollars.
It comes to a point where financially fiscal responsibility that we have to have. And, you know, and that's where, this is where it all comes down to.
But you keep making remarks, there's a budget issue. It was done, he just said.
This is for public, I mean.
This is for public comment. This is for public comment.
So, so I had two, two clarification questions, just so council knows what they're voting on this specifically. Is, is the intention of this motion that this would be a $1.03 increase in addition to the last 25 cents? There was, so this is in lieu of that 25 cents, it's not on top of that. That clarifies that. And then the other question is, is the intention of this motion for it to be retroactive back to the date of the meeting last month? Okay. So just so council's aware, yeah.
Another good question should be is, is, was this even brought to the union? Was this even, this, no, these are negotiated, collective bargain, negotiated agreements that we have in place. And by moving to an assistant chief does not make you come out, because when you're a chief, you're still in. So have we even reached out to even, you know, it, by getting this raise, and then that might sound stupid, but is that in a sense a, a violation of this contract? You know, there's more to talk about and more to think about this, you know? And when we have departments, you know, you're spending over. And if, if we're spending over, you say, here it comes down to this. So we're spending more, we're bringing in less. Guess what happens? It's not rocket science, your taxes go up. Because we have a shrinking tax base, and every single year, there's more money that comes off than goes on to the city. So if we have an increased expenditures and we have, that means we have to make up on revenue. And that is not even, you can't rely solely on revenue to balance your budget.
I, I think, I think the firemen do a good job bringing in grants. I think over this last year, they've brought in a lot of grants that we saved us a whole lot of money. We just, we just voted on the one for $165,000. Our, all we have to do is pay $7,000. So I believe they brought in a lot of money for this city on the grants that they have.
I agree with you.
So I believe that by them bringing in money, we ought to be able to give back to the fire.
But, but Councilman, we also have to take into consideration that we are getting these grants, and that's true. We are getting these grants. So we are getting, we are getting these city grants, but we're not budgeting for the match. So that is on top, that's money that comes straight out of the general.
No. Mr. Basaki?
The firemen are worthy, very much so. We are, I, I stuck my neck out on the line to get two guys, even for that small amount. And this is to me the very first time that I've voted no for anything that has to do with the firemen. We have a couple more months, let's get the increase in the next budget. So unfortunately, I have to, I have to vote no.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Scott, would they still be in the union in that supervisory?
Yes. And the department is in the, in the, we're such a small department.
Right, right.
We allow it to be.
I vote yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for the position of part-time clerk in the sewage office at a starting salary of $12 per hour. Mr. Basaki?
Yes. This was a full-time position, is now becoming a part-time position. So that's where we stand on this one.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of 24 stop signs, posts, and post spaces from U.S. Municipal for a total of $2,601.24. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Are these to, to replace old ones?
I believe.
The city's stop signs are very disposable.
We're not adding any stop signs anywhere, so.
Even if we're.
All right.
They're pretty rough.
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize setting up a direct ACH transaction from the general fund and to approve the expenditure and recurring expense for future years, subject to the right and authority of future councils to rescind such authorization and approval for the City of Uniontown website domain fees. Also authorize Allen Lake to serve as the intermediary with the domain registrar and serve as the administrator and to approve email notifications be sent to the city clerk. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of a 16-foot by 5 feet 8-inch LED scoreboard for use at the Bailey Park Baseball Field from Nebco Sports LLC at a purchase price of $10,012.85. Purchase to be funded with LSA grant funds. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
No cost to the city, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of Pro-Turf windscreen in maroon and windscreen sewn-on letters for fence at Bailey Park Baseball Field from CB Orange Athletic Solutions at a purchase price of $4,421. Purchase to be funded with LSA grants. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yet again, grant funds, so absolutely.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
So I have.
Okay, we'll move to monthly reports. Uniontown Fire Department Chief Con.
Okay. Mayor and Council, thank you for everything. Just a quick report on what's going on with the fire department. Our incidents for the month of August were as follows. We had 11 fire-related incidents, which included three building fires, three passenger vehicle fires, three trash fires or rubbish fires, one dumpster fire, and one fireworks explosion, but the fire was out upon arrival. We had 22 rescue-related incidents, with 15 being motor vehicle collisions, three pedestrians struck by a vehicle, two removal of an ill or injured person from a building, two animal rescues, and one rescue of a person entrapped. Okay? Seven hazardous condition incidents, and these included one carbon monoxide incident, one breakdown of a light ballast but with no ignition, three power lines down, and two electrical issues involving equipment. We had 21 service-related incidents, including seven lockouts or gaining access incidents, two persons in distress incidents, one water leak, 10 general public service calls, and one incident assisting police or another governmental agency. Had two smoke scares or orders of smoke, but no active fire was found or no ignition. We had one minor hazardous materials incident, 11 fire alarm activations, one witness drill in a, I'm sorry, no, there was more than that. There was four witness drill in a public facility. This also included, we did facility staff training for those facilities, and while we were there, we did pre-incident planning and building familiarization. Again, also, I'd like to do the rundown on the training that was either conducted or taken for the month, in the month of August. We had 112 man-hours amongst the department. Couple of apparatus updates. When our department's ladder truck was wrecked into at the beginning of the year, part of the repairs included an annual certification test. We found out that that company did not only do an annual, but we were due for a five-year non-destructive test, which they basically do x-rays and magniflux and things of that nature. This test company actually did that as well. So we were covered for that. So we're actually saving some money as long as, you know, as far as that goes with that. The only thing we have left to do as far as our ladders, we do, per our industry standard, an annual test of our ground ladders, and that is scheduled, and it was approved on the resolution. This will be done on November 1st. We do, we also have had approval, I believe it was the last meeting, for testing and maintenance of our fire pumps, which is done through fast of the Allegheny Mountains. I just spoke with them today. They're pretty backed up, but they assured us that in October, they will be out to do the pump test, and they just haven't picked an exact, an exact day yet, but they said they will be out in October. We've been, we kind of had a little, I'm whatever, confusion on the tires. The tires finally arrived for two of our engines. Had to switch vendors to get them, but they're installed now, so everything's good. Just a couple other things real quick to wrap it up. National Fire Prevention is designated, October 9th through 15th is National Fire Prevention Week. The theme is "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape." Our department, as you know, we participate in fire prevention activities throughout the year, and we're actually pretty, pretty aggressive with our fire prevention program. I believe it makes a difference. I mean, yeah, we do have a lot of fires in this city, but we could have a lot more. So, and, but for October, it's a lot busier month for us than the other 11 months as far as doing fire prevention. We have a lot scheduled already, and I'm sure there will be a lot more scheduled. So, and this is a really good opportunity for us to get out, you know, it ups our community outreach programs, and it also gets us into these buildings again to be, you know, become more familiar with them and that. So we always welcome that opportunity. And again, our, our personnel, they, they do that on a very regular basis. Finally, thank you for voting for the acceptance to the Assistance Firefighters Grant. This is going to purchase hydraulic rescue equipment that runs off of batteries. The new technology out there, that these, these batteries are actually powerful enough to run these tools. They're lighter, they're quicker to deploy. We don't have to worry about power pump to power them with the hydraulic fluid and so on and so forth. It's really going to up our capabilities. It's not just for auto extrication. Any type of machinery rescue, we can use them for commercial fires for forceful entry. There's a whole gamut of things we can do with them. So it's got to be a nice addition to the department, so that's what you all voted on to accept as far as that grant goes. So, and again, we, you know, appreciate your vote for that. I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Johnson, do you have a question for?
I just wanted to let you know, Big Go Tonight? How did I forget? Big Go Tonight early bird special's already going on.
In, in four more minutes. That's right, yes. You are right. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I've got one thing. Just if I do, good, um, right now, just to round off, how much money we've done off the federal government in the past?
Off the, fits alone, I think we're up to 1.4, 1.5 million. And then through other sources, I think I did a rundown on what we've got in grants in the past five or 10 years. We're pushing over 3 billion.
Yeah, and tell them about the city, the city's portion of that.
So, and it's been usually just on the federal grants, it's been 5%. So we've done, I can't remember what the dollar figure was, the total dollar figure. It might have been 100,000, maybe. So we, we've had a lot of success with that. And one thing to be proud of, we, we do this all in-house, though. A lot of departments out there, they'll pay grant raiders to do that. We, we do it all on our own. So, and we're kind of proud of that. We're kind of proud of that. So we're, we're, we're trying to pull our weight, you know, always trying, so. And we appreciate the city's support for accepting those grants and matching the 5% too. So it's got us two brand-new fire engines here in the last couple of years. That's almost unheard of. Like, that's crazy. So $500,000 fire engines. So, yeah, so thank you, Buck, for bringing it out. Anybody have anything else? Thanks, Buck, appreciate that. I, if not, that's, that's about it. Three more minutes to get to Big Go. All right.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Police Department Chief DeWitt?
Mayor and Council, during the month of August, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 858 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included 19 vehicle accidents, four assaults, 34 welfare checks, 37 domestic violence calls, four assist the guys in the red trucks in the fire department, 11 disorderly conducts, 19 emergency medical assists, 15 assist other police, 13 harassments, five shots fire calls, which is pretty notable, but again, that comes with a caveat, only 20% of all shots fire calls are actually made to 911. 26 alarms, 76 suspicious persons, activities, or vehicles, 23 thefts and nine burglaries. Officers made a total of 34 criminal arrests, issued 14 non-traffic citations and 87 traffic citations. Officers also conducted vehicle and foot patrols of the city parks as well as Sheepskin Trail, which is a, as Jared said earlier, is a revenue line for us. On August 14th, this year, obviously, officers were dispatched to East Main Street at the VFW for a disturbance. I was actually working that night, one of my unpaid nights, I guess I'd call it. Came out to work because we were expecting one of our local groups to have a, an album release party, so we had a bunch of officers out. Upon arrival, officers discovered, we were dispatched to a, this disturbance, and when we arrived on scene, we discovered the male was shot multiple times. All the persons in this incident were identified that night, and the incident was actually captured on video. This incident is currently pending review at the District Attorney's Office. The outcome of the review will determine criminal charges relevant to this case. On code enforcement, during the month of August, Officer Camper gave me to current, so as of today. He has been extremely busy with code, as you could imagine. He took in 64 complaints, 18 of which were corrected by the property owner, 20 of which are actively being remediated by the property owner, and he's currently carrying 26 cases over from the beginning of August. Officer Camper's also going to be participating in our community cleanup event this weekend, which I'm sure Laura will be talking about here shortly on the 24th. He's going to be bringing his own personal vehicles in with trailers and trucks to kind of assist in this matter. I believe he took Laura around for a couple hours today so they could really get a game plan on our problematic areas he sees with code. So kudos to him. And again, he's a two-by-four, we're trying to game up the Mississippi River right now, two-by-four Friday, but he's, he's doing a pretty good job. Mayor and Council, any questions? One more thing, I'm sorry. October 1st, from 1:00 to 4:00, Bailey Park will have a community outreach. It's called Faith in Blue. Now, it's a community outreach program, there'll be kickball tournament there for, I think, up to 12 years of age. Be barbecue, free food, don't worry about it. We'll take care of that for you. I think Matt Thomas might be cooking for us. I still have to call him. So, might get to reconnect with him again. That's it. Mayor, Council, any questions? I'll take those in public comment.
So, Chief, I'd just like to say, you know, I'm looking through the line items and the budget here, and, you know, we still have a few months left. We only have 20%. So, you guys are doing a good job keeping under the line, you know, where we're at, what we've spent so far this year, $1.6 million, just over. And, you know, we're under what we're tracking through the year, so keep up the good work, and...
Thank you. Does that include the booking center revenues?
That does not include the booking center revenues right now, so, you know, that, it's gonna look even better. And, you know, every, every time we ask for the department to step up to look for additional ways, the code enforcement, you know, you jumped on. And, you know, I'd just like to say, that is the reasons why we can do more in that department, because we have revenue coming in that offsets the expenditures for what we've already have budgeted. So, again, you know, but we still have a few months to go.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Director of Public Works, Mr. Podlinski?
I forgot to grab the sewage reports, I don't have the totals in front of me here. The door was locked, sorry. But, again, those women in the office there, they do a good job, and are always attentive to answer any questions I have, and give them to me quickly. I've been, I've been speaking with K2, and I've mentioned it to Solicitor Witt before about our street opening permits, so I believe we are going to try to start, actually issue physical permits to the utilities that are digging out in the roads, to make them more accountable and responsible for what they have, and we can know their plans on the restoration. It's gonna add another duty to the girls in the sewage office, so that part-time help, I'm sure, will be greatly appreciated by them, because I'm sure the permits are almost a full-time job. As far as the sewage department, we've been scrambling around a little bit. We still have a guy off on comp. Not really sure when he's gonna be coming back. I believe he's going in for another surgery, and see how that goes. Between the multiple sewage breaks, and just trying to maintain the system, and rebuilding catch basins, as Steve said, we have the old system rebuilding, replacing. In the spare time, we get to respond to the one calls, which in other utilities, that's a full-paid time position, and myself and one other employee, Chris Jackson, we respond to all of those calls, and, as I said, it's a full-time duty. The compost site's been operating fairly fine. I know, I'm sure you guys have all heard me speak about the Beast. We've had some expenses come up recently with it. We're just normal maintenance, but a little more normal. It's a little more, but it's just wearable items. It's a big machine, and it's expensive to work on. As far as that, that's all I have. Any questions? Oh, and I know there've been discussions about the parking on the piece of the Sheepskin Trail we did. I do have plans to put up, like, a railing, but they would've been in the way of this, the stadium lighting poles anyway, so glad we held off on that.
But, you would need to do this, so, is there a plan to stop people?
Well, we're gonna reuse the wearwear ties, and just create, like, just a rail with them, like a fence. South Union has a machine that, they'll send an operator down with us to help us install them. They have aug, or they'll drill the holes out, and that'll be at no cost to us, so they'll look forward to helping the progress. Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Community Development Coordinator, Mr. John?
I'm gonna pick up where Johnny left off. He's got some great ideas to line that section of the trail with a section of fencing that would look similar to what you see when you go out past Meadow Brook on the way to the Hutcheson Ball Field complex. They've got that barrier where cars cannot cross, creating that safety barrier. There are also plans along that stretch of trail, again, through some of those private donations, to landscape that, and to really separate that part of the trail from that alley that I believe is unnamed at this time. One of the biggest things we have switching gears going on right now is this 902 grant, in which we, the city got 4,000-plus recycling containers for every property owner in the city. We got our first shipment in last week. We wanna say a big thanks to Sheila Shea and her people at the recycling center for allowing us to call an audible. The delivery company showed up with a triaxle with 1,160 recycling containers, five hours before they were supposed to. We had help planned for 1 o'clock that day. They showed up at 9:30, 10 o'clock, and the people with the County Recycling Center really went out of their way, so I wanna thank them. Those containers are still housed there at this time, and I wanna thank again Sheila and George and the county commissioners for allowing us to distribute this first batch of recycling containers during our cleanup day, which is on Saturday, the 24th. So, if you are a property owner in the city, and you would like one of these recycling containers, they are very nice, very durable, they've got wheels, they've got a flipped lid, and they're more rectangular-shaped, so they're easier to use, and they provide a lot more storage. We will be there Saturday, handing them out. We ask that you bring a form of ID, and again, that you are a city resident or a city property owner, so that we can attach each can as numbered with a parcel in the city. And if we're not recycling, it's something that we should be doing. Personally, we have reduced our waste at our house by 60%, just starting to recycle. And, that all came from me working here and getting to know Sheila Shea and those folks at the recycling center. Delverm Distributing called that audible. They're the ones who was approved to get that bid, and a special thanks to them as well, Ms. Kutech, and Adventures with Kelly, and the Friends of the Sheepskin Trail for posting the recycling container distribution. Again, we got 1,160 at that storage facility right now, and we wanna get rid of as many as we can on Saturday. And, we know that some people can't come out to get them, so reach out to us, and we'll do everything we can to get them to you. But, we're in the process of looking at the next steps. The next shipment is due September 30th, the next Friday, and we're trying to figure out the best methods of distribution, as well as the best places to store them. In the past, I think we've just stored a bunch here in the basement, and when somebody wanted them, they came in and got them. But, again, it is a big move, updating some of these recycling containers. The sanitation company has really started to focus on separating that garbage from those recyclable materials, and that's kind of a big deal. The comprehensive plan, the team is working currently, setting up meetings individually with council members, Solicitor Witt, and the rest of the city personnel. As soon as they take care of those meetings, I believe they will start opening things up to the public, and we will keep you abreast of those situations. And, finally, the Sheepskin Trail, we were awarded a grant funding to complete the Sheepskin Trail from Fayette Street to the North Union border, and once that happens, again, that is one step closer to connecting us to Dunbar and bringing in worldwide tourism to the city of Uniontown once again. And, I wanna thank the commissioners, and Art Capella, and Dana, and K2 Engineering for all the work they did on that grant. That funding should be secured sometime next month. Weather permitting, we may be able to even start construction, if we could do things in a legal, timely fashion, as far as soliciting bids for that construction work. Not sure how that'll play out, but we are working diligently on it. And, again, thank you, Council and Mayor, for all of your votes. And, again, I believe just doing the right thing, and Councilman Billy, the way that, you know, you look at line items and you look at the numbers, it's an arduous task. And, although sometimes we don't all agree, we try to do the right thing. And, again, I believe this group of people up here on this table do the next right thing. And, I wanna thank you for letting me be involved as heavily as I was the last 18, 19 months, and you're not gonna have to blow my phone up, Mr. Councilman Visaki, because, and I can't call you Councilman Visaki at this juncture, but I'm not, I don't wanna go anywhere. Again, I'm vested in the community, and I love the city in which I was born and raised, and the stories of generational stories that, you know, we have, I get the chills thinking about it. So, you're not gonna have to blow my phone up. I don't wanna go anywhere, as long as you guys will have me. I wanna continue to provide services after this current contract is up, and I will keep an extremely accurate log of what we're doing, and solicit the input that you want me to be doing, and taking that direction. So, again, I thank you, as I humbly stand here and resign from one position, but kinda step into another one with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Buck.
Thank you, Mr. John. Director of Planning and Community Relations, Ms. Kutech?
I'd like to thank Mr. Michael Scott from the Herald Standard for hosting the Founding Day Festival. I know this was back in July. I'm very proud of the fact that he has gifted the city the donation of $2,931 for the rejuvenation project at Marshall Park. I look forward to working with him next year on the details of the holiday weekend that will also include an ethnic festival. Farmer's Market Report, the City of Uniontown Farmer's Market in conjunction with the Uniontown Hospital WBU Medicine 2002 Summer Concert Series. Say that five times. Was a huge success. We had 11 weeks of fun times on Main Street. Vendors, farmers, thank you to the UPD and the UFD for your assistance with the event, with security, and other fun detail. Nema Colon Event, Nema Colon hosted a Community Day event at Bailey Park that was held on August 17th. There was food, face painting, DJ, ice cream truck, a softball game. The game consisted of Nema Colon staff on one team, and our own fire department, police department, and Fayette EMS staff on the other team. Congratulations, Team Nema Colon, it's hard for me to say, for your win. There was approximately 300 to 400 people in attendance. Nema Colon generously donated $2,500 to the city, which has been earmarked for the Everhart Pavilion that will go in Bailey Park. We are hoping this is one of many pavilions that will go up in the park in the future. Nema Colon also donated 20, I'm sorry, $1,250 to the Uniontown Area School District, as well as the Laurel Highlands School District. We humbly thank them again for their generous donations. I had an after-event meeting with them. One of my concerns before the event was the day and time of this event. Next year, that will be moved to early evenings, so more families can attend, and more fun things to follow with them. So, thank you, Nema Colon. Pennsylvania American Water Ribbon Cutting. Pennsylvania American Water had a ribbon-cutting ceremony and lunch to celebrate the completion of the new $3 million Union Town Field Operations Center. This took place on August 31st at the new center on Richmond Street in Union Town. Congratulations, Councilman Visaki, you have a state-of-the-art facility to be proud of. With that connection, and Mr. Tim Burtar, I would like to thank him for putting me in contact with fellow colleague Rudy Menhart. Rudy will be assisting and shared information on the Wounded Warriors Project, and their interest in sponsoring another US flag retirement box for us, and more in local communities. St. George Blue Mass, Fayette County's Blue Mass Annual Commemoration of the Anniversary of the Attack on September 11th, 2001, was held on September 10th at St. George Church in Union Town. Ladies of St. George Church hosted a lovely reception after the mass. Let's commemorate all the first responders who have given their lives for others in the line of duty. Our own fire department and police departments were well represented, and it was good to see you, Councilman Winfrey, there as well. Upcoming events in the city, Community Cleanup Day. Chief DeWitt spoke on that. Just a reminder, it is this Saturday. We are meeting across from Maple Garden Apartments at about 8:45. If you come early, there'll be donuts and coffee. This day is for cleanup, and we ask to keep non-recycle, hard recyclables limited. We would like to focus more on the trash in the city and cleaning up our beautiful parks. In April, volunteers were able to collect 12.84 tons of trash in three hours. I'm pretty proud of that, given the number of volunteers that we had. I'm looking to surpass that number on Saturday. We are partnering again with Fayette County Recycling Center, keep PA beautiful again. Thank you, Mary Gurke, Councilman Winfrey, Officer Kempart, for the hours we've spent canvassing the city and targeting the areas that need the most cleanup. We went out Monday, one side of the city. Officer Kempart and I circled around a few more. My plan is, with county hauling, they'll have a roll-off at the compost site and a truck. I would like to have another roll-off and truck at where we meet on Gouton Avenue. And then, they also have a third truck for use for the day. They would like a lead to go around. What I saw today, the concentrated area, there's no problem with, I didn't even list because it's one area, and it can be up one alley, down the other. I just asked residents to please try to tend to your own garbage, and not put it out for others to dispose of, to take care of. It is a laboring task. I appreciate all volunteers. Not all are able to pick up old, huge TV sets, and mattresses, and box springs, and couches, and love seats. So, if you have time Saturday, please come up and help. We'd love to have you. Another event on the horizon, Chief DeWitt spoke of, Faith in Blue, October 1st at Bailey Park, 1 to 4. I was asked to help with a few details. Parking is one. I would like to, I have a concern with that. Asbury has an event that day. We're not allowed to park there. I'd like to know the status of the city parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue. Will that be finished? Open?
We could open that up, though.
Okay, for parking?
It's available.
Okay. I've been, and the social hall's not available that day.
We have a round that day.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm, I'm...
The parking lot at Pennsylvania Avenue.
Pennsylvania Avenue. Okay, good.
There's gonna be a little bit of hanging going on there, but I think they can be parked.
Okay. I just, there's nowhere to park. Also, with that, the light posts, will they be up before the Faith in Blue event at Bailey Park? Does anyone know? I'm just concerned of the liability and the danger with families. Does anybody know? No? Okay. Okay. And then, areas of construction, or where they're working on, roped off for safety. I know there's some equipment over there. I just don't wanna see anything.
We'll look at it, we'll get more.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank the Herald Standard for their front-page coverage of the Nema Colon event, and also the US flag retirement box. Mark Hoffman has promised me additional coverage on the city's positivity. I had contact from our, all of our departments, and he said that he will get to those exciting events in the near future. I think that's all I have, so thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kutech. Joe, did you have some recommendations?
Yes. Yes. In regards to Resolution 248, first of all, I wanna thank Mark John for assisting me too, this past year, with Parks and Recreation, and also the continuing improvements at Bailey Park, and also John McCoon, who is very instrumental with this list, improvements made to Bailey Park from private donations. So, he was very instrumental with compiling this list, and working with the donators themselves. So, I wanna thank John for that. What's going on down there is, I just wanna reiterate what we passed on Resolution 248, replacement of fencing around the parking lot at Pennsylvania Avenue, landscape and signage along the Sheepskin Trail, also along the front of Bailey Park as you enter from Pennsylvania Avenue. Dead trees to be removed along the parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue, also new trees to be planted around the parking lot at Pennsylvania Avenue. The parking lot on Pennsylvania Avenue is to be sealed and striped. Again, as we mentioned, pavilions will be built around the park and around the Sheepskin Trail. Tennis courts and pickleball courts... Tennis courts and pickleball courts will be resurfaced and painted. Basketball courts will also be resurfaced and painted. Fencing around the basketball and tennis courts are to be replaced. The dugouts will be painted. Paint will also be needed on the benches that are there now. We're also going to add new benches with the plastic coating. If you've seen those benches around, that's what we're going to add. We're not going to add any more benches that would need additional upkeep. Drainage around the ballfields is still a problem from, from the hillside. We're going to work on improving the drainage there by the ballfields. Again, tonight, we approved the new scoreboard and also the new windscreen, which will be in school colors, United, Uniontown High School colors, mostly maroon, and it'll be trimmed in white. So if you go down to Bailey Park, you'll notice some of these changes going on right now. That's all I have. Thank you. Thanks again to Mark John and John McCoon. Thank you, John.
Mary, I have something I wanted to-
Go right ahead.
Okay, so there has been a lot of talk about the condition of our city and just the way it looks, and that the city needs to go around and clean up. We are all responsible for our own property and our own messes. I just, I want to show you, this is just a picture I took. I don't have a whole lot, but this is, this is down in Grant Street Park. These folks, I'm not sure how they got there, but a lot of this stuff could have been put in bags and disposed of properly, but this, this is what we're running into in the city.
I was wondering to make, I haven't seen this before. So I'm calling in and what is the situation?
That's great. And that's, that's the thing is, we, as citizens, we need to take a little bit more pride and respect for our own city. It, it didn't take, people pull up, dump this garbage right in front of a dumpster, a lot of it could have been put in bags, put out the curb, and if you were able to get it down to the dumpster, you're able to take it to the dump where it belongs. We have 4,000 approximately parcels, approximately 9,000 citizens. Cleanup Day, how many people do we get? So we can't, as a city, complain if we're not going to do anything about it. It's, all of us has a group. So I'm just asking, everyone need to come out. I understand people have things they have to do, they have to work. Actually, I have to work tomorrow as well, but this next Cleanup Day, I'm going to take the day off. We need more community involvement. It just can't continue, and it's not the city's job or responsibility to go around and be trash pickup and trimming people's trees. It's just not our job. It's the people's responsibility of the city. If you see something, say something. Confront people if you see them putting stuff out. It's just, it's, it's just, it's unnecessary, and it makes us all look bad. So I mean, if, if we can all just chip in a little bit more-
Is there flyers or anything randomly handed out to let people know about the City Cleanup Day?
There's something on, in the entryway.
I mean, are they being passed out like around the city, like even about the recycling cans? I didn't know nothing about them until coming down here tonight. Do people in the community even know about these recycling cans unless they come here?
Can we check our website? I don't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, most of the information's on our website.
I didn't even know that y'all had a website. But yeah, like maybe if there's like some flyers or something being handed out to the people, doors for people to know about these things that's going on. There's a lot of things, I didn't know nothing about the recycling cans.
I think that's actually a great idea. We, there, we, we're going to have to come up with a way to inform people even more that things like this are going on.
I wouldn't mind taking flyers when we leave and just handing out on a couple streets. I live in one, I don't know.
Mr. John's coming around, he's going to give you some flyers. So we need to, this is something we're going to have to, we'll get together more and figure out something we can do to help get the information out to the city. So thank you very much for wanting to do that. And I just ask everybody to just, just come together and just make ourselves a little bit more presentable and a little more pride in our own city. I mean, that's at a park. I mean, not only could it have been put in bags, but lift the lid, throw it in the dumpster instead of dumping it right in front. So that's, that's all I got to say about that. And then I did have-
I have a question about the street.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, when, when was calling off the local, what are the fences, the wooden fences that are up there? What is that for?
Do you have the, no, I don't.
Wooden panels of fencing there that's up on the park in different areas, it's not connecting. So what is it for?
Go ahead.
I will say that that was done without any council approval, and it just appeared one day. So we don't know what happened, how it got there, and I'm certainly not speaking for council, but I don't believe that any of those paintings or fenceings were voted on by council in Uniontown. So it was done, I hate to use the word erroneously, but erroneous. And although it is nice to see some part of our park in paint and freshening up, there's still a procedure by which we all need to abide, to either approve or disapprove of these things at these kind of public meetings.
And just those fences and whatnot, I just feel like, you know, there's kids all down there. Anything can happen to a child behind it, because if you're driving down there, you can't see behind those fences, or what's going on, or who's doing something behind it, or who's sleeping there, or anything. So I just think it's a really big public safety concern there.
Well, let's, let's get together and, as councilmen, try to figure out a solution for this.
Sounds great. Anything else, anything else, Steve?
Real quick, though, Tim, could you explain the, the process and rules just for public comment in general, so everyone's clear?
Maybe before we get to that, I was, okay, I'll have Tim do that, okay?
Sure.
But I never presented the proclamation to Ms. Sessarino of Constitution Day, and I'm sorry to make you sit here, and I apologize. On behalf of the city, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry, sorry about that. Okay, it's the time and place for public comment, and, Tim, maybe you could, maybe explain what our rules are for public comment, and before you start, we've put up a new clock thanks to Mr. Visaki, and it's a three-minute time limit.
It's to keep it fair for everybody.
Fair for everyone. We haven't had a fair forum for everyone, so that's what our rules are.
Yeah, it just, it needs to be fair for everyone, so everyone has the right amount of talk, the time to talk.
Maybe just explain those a little, make them a little more clear.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So the, the goal of public comments is exactly that. It's public comment. So public comment isn't really an opportunity, it's not a dialogue back and forth, it's for individuals to be able to present information for consideration by council, just to make sure that we're respecting everybody's time, because I know we appreciate everybody's time and everybody that's stuck with us so far. Just so we're continuing the, the conversation and continuing the meeting, there is that three-minute timeframe. So we did obtain that clock to make sure that we are consistently abiding by that requirement. Once again, typically, under the Sunshine Act, residents of the city and taxpayers of the city have the right to speak at public meetings. City Council does permit others to speak, and so certainly they have the opportunity to have three minutes as well. But they also, everyone needs to keep in mind, you know, you want to keep topics germane, and you, you need to obviously be respectful, have, you know, civil comments and, and provide information for consideration by council, so.
And that doesn't mean that we can't revisit the idea of extending it as well, is that correct?
No, so, so it can be extended, especially if there, there is something that council does want to respond to.
Well, I mean, as far as to actually change the amount of time, is that something-
Yeah, that's something that can be revisited as well. So there was a policy-
Definitely discussed, that way, you know, we can help everyone get their, their time.
Well, the lawyer today spoke to you for three minutes.
Well, he was actually on the guest list for, in the beginning, that wasn't public comment.
Yeah, he had, he had, there were two items on the agenda that he was presenting for.
You do your three minutes, and if nobody else has something to say, you have some more to say, can you get back up there and say?
No, it's, it's three minutes per person, per minute.
Many people at the side of the office, nine minutes for the public.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's as many, it's many members of the public that are able to speak.
Way before a lot of us even got on, so that's why I would have-
Do I ask you about the three-minute time limit?
So I, I, that was a resolution that was passed previously. I don't even know when that was passed.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. We're, we're going to-
And that is-
We're going to talk about getting that done.
Okay.
And that's not, just to clarify, that's not exclusive to the city. That's very common amongst a lot of municipalities and school districts, is a three-minute comment period. So that is not something just that the City of Uniontown implements, that is very common in a lot of places.
And that is why I asked if we can get together and change.
Tell them they have to state their name and address.
It's no wrong, you're right, and it's, it's tough, so, yeah. But that we did it at the time, just to keep it fair for everybody, so, but.
Does someone interfere enough to that they can get back their time?
So I, I'm going to, yeah. But yes, I'm going to call to see what we can do about it.
So before we get to public comment, I, there's one more thing that I wanted to talk about, I'm sorry. There's one more thing I want to talk about that I did not mention, okay? So the city has brought in income, $4,893,194.25. That's the income we've brought in thus far, okay? Expenditures that we've had thus far is $4,876,733. We are only operating on a $16,000 net income so far. We don't have very much, if any, more taxes to collect, and we're, we're running, we're relying on revenue. We're relying on the, the revenue to come into balance. So just to put it out there for my fellow councilmen, for the rest of the year, we are going to bring a little bit more money in, but we only have 16, just under 17,000, 16.5. We're exactly, it's $16,481 net. We have a lot more money to spend and a little bit more to collect, so, you know, this is why I, I really speak a lot and I fight hard for it and to get my point across and my view. And I will take any more of your time, sorry.
Can, would, can we get some suggestions on time? What would, would people like to see? I mean, I know we, we have to have a limit, but.
I mean, you're all, there are a lot of people here, a lot of people who need to speak, so three minutes is very short. How many people, so how many of us people will actually be at the council? Like you said, if three people don't speak in three minutes, that's not going to be a problem.
Okay. We're going to start with public comment now. Okay, okay.
We asked everybody to be receptive.
I did.
Okay. Okay. Make sure you state your, state your name.
That's all right, that's all right.
Sorry about that.
Somebody got a problem with what I just said?
I said you had somebody before you.
Oh, I'm sorry then, come on, go ahead.
That's all right, sir, go right ahead. I'll be, I'll be respectful.
All right. My name's Robert Hall, I live in Uniontown, and I want to stress two different things. One of them is, I'm curious about what the $108,000, $108,000 missing, I believe it's the Treasurer's Department. What's going on with that, if you can say? And if, if the lady has bonded the Treasurer, and it's, and she's the one it's, it's missing from, the Treasurer's Department, do we have a deductible under that bonding? $1,000, $5,000, I don't know. Is there a deductible on the bond?
So go ahead and ask your, so since you have three minutes, go ahead and ask any questions.
Okay, that's first, respond to me. And the other one is, this is just a public safety. I live on the corner of Evergreen Terrace and Beer Lane, right below the hospital. And I sit on my side porch, I've been there for 12 years, sit on my side porch, and I watch traffic going through all four stop signs like a bat out of hell, excuse my language. I see sometimes they're going 40, 50 mile an hour. If they're coming from Mount Vernon Avenue, they go 150 yards, they got to stop at 21, where they're going to go into the parking lot across where the, where the doctor's office is. I would like to know if it's a possibility that we could put speed bumps on each corner. And I'll grant you what, if you put the ones up like the hospital has up there, I hit them one night not knowing they were there. And believe me, you only do it once. You won't speed over them anymore. But I've actually seen people come up to the intersection, they don't even look, they just speed through. I see people coming down Beer from Berkeley and going straight up to 40, and they don't stop. And coming the other way from 40 to Berkeley, they don't stop. You can sit there and count out of 100 cars, if you get 15 to 20, if you get 15 or 20 to stop, that's a high figure. Like I said, I sit there all the time. And it's, you know, we've got kids in the neighborhood now. When I moved there, there weren't too, hardly any kids. Now we got probably eight or 10. And it's just, it's a safety feature, I don't know how you go about it. If you have to have a survey, if you want to have a survey, just come sit on my porch with me, we'll sit there and drink coffee. But you'll see more accidents possibly happening. So it's, it's, that's just a safety feature. If, if, you know, you don't do anything about it and somebody gets killed, I guess it's on your hands and not mine, because I've alerted you to it, and it's just a safety issue. Like I said, you can sit there and people just speed up and down the street, and I'm sure there's other streets they speed up and down too. I know they go crazy on Mount Vernon Avenue, because I lived on it for years when I was a kid. But when they get on Evergreen Terrace, you know, they got, they go to 21, they got to stop. If they go to Mount Vernon, they got to stop. But it's coming through the intersection, it's crazy. You know, you really have to watch what's going on. You know, one of these days, I might have one of them in my house, I don't know. But that's being done, I'm probably close to my three minutes, so I'm going to stop. Any questions on anything? Probably not. Now, maybe you can address my thing.
Yeah, to, to answer your question, so the city, to recoup that $106,750, the city has submitted a bond claim. As you're aware, that's currently in process, so we're waiting to hear back from the bonding company. And to answer your other question, there is no deductible for the city on that bond.
How long does it take? If they, once it's approved, when will we get the money? Because $100,000?
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly, it's a fairly, it's a fairly quick process once it's approved, so.
But, Tim, tell them the truth. Tell them that the bonding company told the treasurer she has to pay it out her own money. You're not recovering to tell them, tell the truth. You've been, the bonding company has responded, and the bonding company told the treasurer that she has to pay whatever the city gives back. Was there a thorough audit out before the new treasurer came in there and saw if he was put on-
So, so let's, let's, let's have some order to public comment.
That, well, then you should ask that question, because that's really what it's at issue. For context, my name is Carmina Taylor. Over two years ago, I was asked to come help and advocate for city residents in Uniontown. I have a statewide organization called We Can't Wait. I spend my own money to travel to Uniontown to advocate for marginalized residents in the city. I, I did an open records request three or four months in March and April, and I wrangled with the solicitor, because the city clerk didn't want to answer simple, simple statistics. So when the lawyer talked about waiting 70 days, I want you to know that it took me four months to get simple answers on documentation that someone that's been in that position for 10 years. So here we go. So as a result of all the four months, I had a redacted statement. Does everybody see that? You see more black than white? That's because there was an engagement agreement for an accounting firm that wasn't the one that they used for 10 years to specifically look at something. The law for third-class city code said that if you do an external audit, you're supposed to audit all the departments, not one. Okay? So that's one. And so my other problem is, because I traveled over nine hours to get here today, and I traveled September 1st to get here today. Mr. Jared Billy, on January 24th, you signed a letter to the, the PA Department of Community and Economic Development to ask for an extension for the financial statements that were not submitted to the state for 2020 and '21. And you said in this letter that you would have the reconciliation by the summer, and it's not done. Okay, so here's the other thing that I want to show you. This is a 17-page document that the solicitor sent back to me to say no for some simple variant answers. So I took it a little bit further, because I'm a statewide advocate, I'm a Pennsylvania taxpayer, and I'm a Pennsylvanian. I may not be from Uniontown, but I care about Uniontown, and I care about anybody. I have a right to go into any community in this state and advocate for people in that state, so let's be clear. Lastly, I want to say that I looked at all the financial records that this city council submitted to the state from 2013 to 2019, and there were no lying items, four expenditures related to any city clerk anywhere, zero, nothing, nothing. But there's somebody that's been working here since then, and two people that have been working there since 2015 or longer. My point is, you as city residents are not asking the right questions. You need to ask for transparency. They're lying. I've been involved in it. Y'all need to wake up and, and advocate. Okay? So I have the documentation. Everything that I say, I can back up. It is unfair that I would travel from the east, southeastern side of this state and only have three minutes to speak, when I've been trying to help everybody. I've been trying to work with the city council. I can't even begin to tell you how many, how many emails I've sent to all of these people to ask respectfully to advocate for all of you guys. Because what I have found is that you guys have an apathetic community and you can't.
Your, your, your time's up.
You was, good, good job, sister. You're flattering. You gotta inspire people to be motivated, clean their mind.
I just wanna say, who's gonna investigate him when the city clerk's husband is the detective for the county?
It's all families around here, everybody's family. You might get by this one.
State your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Malibie. Y'all probably remember me from being down here in July about an incident that happened at my house. And then the chief spoke to the Herald Standard and said that the things that people are hearing in this community is gunshots or cars backfiring and fireworks, which is completely incorrect. I'm gonna take you to an incident Friday night, I'm sitting, matter of fact, might have been Saturday morning, Friday night into Saturday morning. I'm sitting on my house, pop, 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 pop. Called the 911, steel shots being fired in the back of the 911 call. Here comes the city police pulling out, pull up, there's a whole crowd, you can tell who the shooter is clearly because he's hyped up telling them what they wasn't gonna do. They better not touch him, better not say nothing to him and what did they do, got in their car and they left. This isn't the first in time this happened, it happens all the time they pull up. They pull up down there, sometimes they don't even get off their cars. The shooter or whoever's doing whatever, cuss them out, they get in their car, left. My question is, what is protocol when something like this happens? I've been putting cuffs for less. When this guy's out there jumping around doing what he's doing, there's no way that they shouldn't have done that. To the point, somebody else called the police and asked, could the state police come? Because it looked like those officers were scared. Like, was her. So to me, um, you could have put him in cuffs, I'm sure if you searched him, he would have had a gun in his pocket, cause right before y'all pulled up, the shots were still firing. Why am I on the call with 911? Called and spoke to Chief D. Whit, what does he do? Try to call him like he did the last time. Called Mayor Gurkey, he calls me back, was supposed to call me back Tuesday, never called me back. I was at work when he did call me back, asked him, can you call me back after 11:00 on Tuesday, I'll be available or whenever you're available, he said I had a meeting at 9:30 Tuesday to be exact. Never heard back from him. This is ridiculous. There's so many unsolved homicides in this, in this town and it don't make no sense. Shots fired all the time, yes, there's a lot of shots being fired, like he said, that's not being reported because what are we reporting them for when they're not doing nothing? Y'all trying to find money to budget for the firemen, they're actually doing their job. Cut their salaries, they're not doing their job. It don't make no sense. People's houses can be hit by these stray bullets and they're pulling up, like I said, not even getting out of their cars half the time and they're getting cussed out and they're pulling off. Once again, I've been in cuffs for less and they're not doing nothing.
What you talking about? I thought the, the shooter was gonna shoot the police.
It was that bad. It was that bad. You can't talk, it's my three minutes. You can't talk, it's my three minutes. And then about this audit, I have a question about what she just said. Because was there a thorough audit done before Ms. Hodge got into office? Because why is now a thorough audit being done when the black woman is in office, when y'all know people been stealing from this city for years because y'all keeping in the family around here? This is the problem. How are y'all gonna put this blame on her when there was no thorough audit done before she took in the office? That's the easy person to try to point the finger at is the black woman. Cause y'all have a problem with her getting into office from the beginning. Maybe change this, change everything around and save a lot of people's lives.
Stay up there to get the answer from the people there.
Yeah, I got 20 seconds. Can I get answers? Can I get answers from G. D. Whit? Why, this is what your officers is doing, pulling up on shots fired? What is the protocol? And you told me BS is what you told me. And cause you was telling me BS like you did when you told the Herald Standard that the, where shots were being fired were fireworks and cars backfiring. Come on now. Come on now.
Your time.
I mean, other people get back and forth, I don't know why. It's so big, you got these guys.
I had not really lied about the same thing and nothing was done.
Any other public comment this evening? Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
You can ask the question, was the audit. She's still, you know. But the audit done before Ms. Hodge got in the, in the seat. Was there a thorough audit before Ms. Hodge got in the seat? I'll ask, if nobody wants to ask, we know the answer.
So, no, I mean, there's no problem answering that question. So there is an audit that's done every year, a general audit of cities finances. A general, a general audit that's done every year in accordance with DCD's requirements. Applies to all.
Let him speak.
It applies to all municipalities across the state. It applies to all municipalities in, in the state. For. Presently, we, we also, the city also engaged another auditing firm because there were issues and red flags that were presented to the city with respect to the, the operations in the treasurer's office, which is why another audit specifically, or agreed-upon procedures were done with respect to that office in particular. That is consistent, it is permissible under their third-class city code and the local tax collection law. So those are all available actually through DCD's websites, so those, those have to be posted. And so there's an audit report that the city receives and that's public information. Anybody can get that with a right-to-know request and in fact, some people in this room have requested that. Some people in this room have already requested those, so they have those. Anything that's an actual DCD municipal audit is available through DCD's website online. So that can be freely available immediately through DCD's website.
And can I just say one thing? You guys keep talking about the budget, you know, there's no money. You've got three minutes to public comment. Hold on, I'm still gonna speak. You've got three minutes.
Trey, Trey, you'll get your three minutes.
Got city clerks, got people in the treasurer's office, got people in the sewage department. Buy the money.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Restart it. Restart it.
Well, I had a question about the audits, but since Ms. Taylor knows more about it, can you come up here and speak on my behalf?
No, no.
It's three minutes, it's three minutes per person. There's, there's no procedure where you cede your time to someone else. It's three minutes per person.
Okay, well, anyway, so you have.
Union, you can speak for a half hour if you wanted, but Uniontown, they time you up.
Cause they're afraid someone's gonna say the truth. Why don't you speak the truth?
What I'm gonna say was, I had problems with the prior treasurer and I would suggest that we release the records for the audit that was immediately after his time in office because um, it was, it was questionable and I brought the attention to Mr. Billy actually one time after a meeting, or during a meeting. And uh, I was very upset to hear now that he's trying to hide some things that actually were brought up when he and I had a private conversation outside in the hallway. But anyway, I would like Ms. Taylor to finish her, I would like to ask her if she saw the audits and what, was there anything on there?
Well, so if you, if you wanna ask her, I mean, you're free to ask her after the meeting.
I am, I'm asking her.
This is, this is comment to the city.
Ms. Taylor?
So she can comment, but this is not comment. This is, these are questions, so this is comment to council.
You're taking my time.
Go ahead, I mean, speak, but you, you're comment to council.
We need to change the policy. If I have somebody, if I had a lawyer that was up here and I wanted them to speak on my behalf even though they didn't live in the city of Uniontown, then I have the right to do it.
Yes, you do.
So I'm not sure what you're talking about, I can't have somebody talk on my behalf? Anyone in this room can have.
Somebody who's representing.
I mean, we're only asking for three minutes.
We can, we can certainly talk about that policy. I don't wanna use your time up, but we can talk about that after the, after the.
I just want, I'd like to see the audits because from what I understood, there was no complete audits for 25 years. That's questionable.
Tim, can you just clarify, for the 2020 year, is that audit in 2019? And you, you have to submit to the state on April 1st, 2020. That's the time period for the year before?
The audit that, the audit is conducted for the prior year.
Correct. So this letter that was asked in January is asking the state to give you guys extended time for the 2020 audit, which means that's 19 and that's before the treasurer became an elected official. That's the answer. No, they did not do an audit because here's the letter on January 24th asking for an extension for that audit year. This is the answer.
The 2020 audit year refers to the 2020 calendar year. It's not semantics, the 2020, it's the same audit.
Anyone else?
Mr. Blackburn? State your name.
Oh, I, I'll let everyone else finish it. I'll just say, I don't wanna cut anyone off. I'll be respectful of the.
Your time's going now, Jesse, go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Well, I would just like to raise uh, the concern of the, the time limit because clearly it's becoming an issue and I would hate to see the police get brave all of a sudden and arrest a public commenter because they ain't gonna arrest the damn criminals. So I think we should at least extend that to four or five minutes so people can get off their chest what they need to say because we only get one time a month to do it. And if Ms. Marshall doesn't wanna follow the Sunshine Act, then we gotta wait three extra weeks to get our chance for the month. So I think at least respect the public and give these people enough time to say what they need to say because a lot of these issues are complex and a lot of people have more than just one issue going on. So that's issue number one. Issue number two is the police chief still hasn't released a video from over a year ago for charges that were dismissed, that they based those charges on. No, they can't arrest the shooter, but they'll arrest a journalist, they'll arrest somebody who's helping out with the political campaign of the former chief, but God forbid they arrest an actual criminal. I'm a state law enforcement officer, I know the law, they violated my civil rights several times in the past few years. Anyone can check the laws, I'll give you the law for what they violated. I'm not up here seeking sympathy, I'm seeking change, as are all these other people. And it's damn time, cause I've been coming here for over a year now and it hasn't gotten better, it's gotten worse. You've doubled down, we've changed some elected officials and I don't think it was enough. We need a complete changeover, including for departments, except for like they said, the fire department. Everybody in Uniontown loves the fire department and the state police. Why? Because they do their damn jobs. Thank you, I see the rest of my time to Ms. Taylor or this young lady right here if you'd like to come speak. All right, thank you.